Great. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Marin Municipal Water District Finance Committee and Administration Committee Board Meeting on November 11th. May I have a roll call, please?
Good morning. Director Ron G. Kush.
Here.
Director Larry Russell.
Here.
Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chair Monte Schmidt.
Here.
And Chair Jed Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second. Any public comment?
There is none.
And a roll call, please.
Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Smith.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great. Any public comment on items not on the agenda?
There are none.
All right, terrific. And so now we go to the regular items. And we have the minutes from the finance meeting from October 24th. Can I have a motion in a second on the minutes, please? So moved.
Second.
Any public comments on the minutes?
There are none.
Great. And a roll call, please.
Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Smith.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great. And then next item is Agenda 4B, which is our monthly financial update. Welcome, Brett.
Thank you, Chair Smith and directors. My name is Brett Upandall, Finance Director for the district here. We have our routine monthly update here, financial update for actuals as of the end of October, which is 33% of the fiscal year. So we're at the one-third mark. That would point out that we've now finished four billing cycles. So you'll see here kind of the last four cycles of the summer or so, the last two of which now have the kind of this year's rates in them, and then the first two are still last year's rates. So we're starting to get a good picture of the way this year's at least summer usage and revenues come in. As you can see here on the first slide, 33% of the fiscal year, we're in largely in the 40%, you know, plus range in our revenue. Again, water revenue being by far the largest input here. We expect to be right around there, around 40%, given that it's summertime revenue. So we'll start to go, you know, lower and lower in terms of a linear projection going forward as we kind of round out the year. But at this time in the year, 33% through the time. But we expect to get about 40% of our revenue. So we're actually pretty much well on track there.
Brett, does this include October?
Yes, end of October, July, August, September, October, so four months. You can see we're a little bit better than last year in terms of percent to budget, looking over the right-hand column. Other revenues, that's just kind of showing some of our grant revenues starting to come in as we're being able to bill out those hours from over the summer. So those are a little bit ahead for now, but generally where we expect them to be. Capital revenue there at the bottom is lagging just a little bit. A lot of that's due to the fire flow, tax fee that comes in on the tax rolls in December. So it'll even up after we get that first tranche of payments from the county on the tax rule. All in all, though, I'll go into more detail, obviously, but all in all, again, really pointing to kind of consistently on track the last three or four months. Expenditures, similar story to the last couple of months, we're lagging there. We're kind of, you know, struggling to hit that 33% mark. We would expect to be by this time of the year closer to right on the linear track. And so Personnel Services is showing a little bit kind of lagging vacancies as we're still kind of going through some turnover. We are increased pretty significantly from last year, you know, in terms of a couple of percent on each side. So we are making progress there. But we're still lagging just a little bit with the turnover we've had. Maintenance operations are starting to pick up. You may recall the last couple of months was even lower than this. So we are starting to get some of those invoices paid on the operation side. And looking down there to capital, we have done a really good job of encumbering projects and getting them going. So we're actually ahead of our budget a little bit when you pull in last year's incomparables and expense. So we expect that to be accelerating quickly over the winter time as we get all of our summer projects billed out and prepare for next year. So in good place across the board there. Obviously, there's a lot of expenditure still that happened with capital. But that's, you know, the result of us ramping up the expenditure plan over the last two years. This is the breakdown here of water sales revenue in each of the categories. Water sales on the left being again the largest variable portion. So on the year, as I mentioned, we have 44%. You look at the bottom there, that's about, you know, where we'd want to be, 100% of expected actuals. Being somewhat of a trained pessimist when it comes to finances, the last two months are a little bit below where you want to be, right? If you look at September and October, we're in that 94, you know, maybe 95% range. So you know, again, a couple of months doesn't, you know, make the entire year. But I do want to make sure we're tracking those kind of more recent months and more recent usage as we get closer to the end of the year. You know, I've mentioned a few times in the last couple of meetings that, you know, this, the water sales revenue in particular will really kind of be the kind of the basis setting point for the budget planning for the next two-year cycle. And so we're going to be looking even closer at that in November and December as we can give the district more instructions on what to expect in terms of revenues for next year. Again, we're a little bit below the monthly pace for the September-October timeframe. And we would expect these all, as you can see in the budget, we'd expect the budget columns there and water sales, all of the revenues to start kind of ticking downward as the cold colder temperatures kick in and we get more rain as we're seeing here today. So we'll report on those again, not next month because we don't have a December FAC meeting, but in January you'll get two months worth of data there. Service charge is a fixed fee. That one tends to hover right around there, 99, 97%. Watershed fee is variable now, but does not have the tiers associated with it. So we're kind of running almost exactly parallel to consumption. And then CMF there on the right has been lagging a little bit. And so we're going to take a closer look at that next year to make sure we have the right budget set for that. But all in all, consistent, kind of what I would be expecting. It's really been, you know, six months or so of pretty I don't want to say predictable, but within a range of a couple of percent on either side. That's been relatively, like I said, consistent and consistent with the plan that we set up with the prior budget. Water consumption, and this is again another consistent pattern we've seen, you know, going back three or four years now, but month over month kind of tracks the year over year as well. This shows us again, one-third of the way through the year and each of the 10 years shown here. We're consistently getting back towards that 10-year average. Kind of regression towards the mean type of a thing. We're seeing, you know, a couple of percent each year of increase. And so that's again, to be expected. That's what we had built into the rate kind of planning and into the budget planning, whether it be a 2% to 3% per year kind of increase as we get back to our normal consumption levels. And we're seeing almost exactly that. So another good sign, another kind of sign of we're on track for what we thought we'd be at this time of the year. And so that completes, you know, the kind of four or five slides we typically check in on, kind of the main indicators. The next slide is more of a transition into preview of last year's financials. So I can stop if there's any questions on the first for me kind of typical slides we do before I move on.
Any comments from directors? Larry? Good?
Good.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the report. Any public comments on this? It's just information only?
I'm still, I'm still
Are you still going on?
I just wanted to pause there as I'm shifting a little bit. So what I have here is kind of the initial look into our year-end financial highlights. So obviously, we finished last fiscal year in June. Staff, finance staff has been working with our external auditor to finalize our annual report. We're nearly finished with that. So we'll be bringing that actual audit to the board, hopefully within a couple of weeks. And we'll be bringing the auditor to present on the findings in January. So we'll have much more detail here upcoming. I just did want to give the board a little bit of a highlight here. So generally speaking, our financial results are all positive. We've increased our cash position to over $300 million, but not a cash position, net position. And our cash position has increased to $87 million, and I'll show kind of how that's broken down within our reserves. And so those are both, you know, good increases, good solid, positive increases that look good on our overall financial record. What I would kind of give as an overview here is there's a lot of carryforward, as I mentioned, in the capital. So what we'll start to see in a lot of this is we raised the revenue in one year and we're holding the expenses till the next year. So a lot of this will end up being carried forward. So it's not necessarily a spendable cash position increases. They're funds we have earmarked for projects that will get spent largely in this year, but probably some into some extent next year as well. We did see a relatively healthy portion of one-time budget savings, and I think I've mentioned these a few times since June. But largely due to vacancies is where we saw some of the expenditure savings. So capital, like I said, was more delayed on the operating side. We just had a year of kind of higher than usual vacancies as we kind of transitioned towards filling our positions again. So we do have some one-time expenditure savings there that were I don't want to say unexpected because we saw them developing throughout the year, but as we closed the year out, they were kind of confirmed where we thought we'd be. Board may recall, we also had interest earnings that were in excess of the budget as the interest rates stayed much higher throughout the last year than we expected two years ago. And we did have the COVID grant, the relief re-eridge program from the state that really helped out a lot of our customers that had been in the re-eridges. And so those were one-time impacts that we were able to recognize last year. Those all lead towards kind of that net income and that cash position increasing to where they are now. I would also say the board may recall, we went through an exercise last year this time to update our reserve policies to really give them minimum balances and target balances for each of the seven different reserve funds. We also added a reserve fund as well during that time. And one of the other things we did is we refined the purpose for each reserve and kind of helped refine it and redefine it. And we kind of solidified the underlying calculations for each of the reserve funds. So I wanted to show how those are starting to shape out here with the year-end kind of results. So these are our seven reserves that we do have in our policy. I would note that we do also have to hold funds in cash for other reasons, such as our bond reserves and and some of our unspendable kind of cash deposits. So this isn't the entirety of our reserves, but this is the policy reserves that the board sets. So the first two up there, insurance and workers' compensation, those are largely set by outside actuaries and by, you know, kind of the experts telling us how much we need to hold to cover our likely kind of run rates over the next couple of years. So each year in workers' comp, we get an actuarial evaluation telling us how much we need to hold. And so we don't really have a lot of, you know, discretion there with how much we hold. Minimum balance and target balance are the same. With our insurance, you know, we do have a target of either holding one times our self-insured deductible or two times our self-insured deductible. So that's really what those are linearly kind of additions of all of our self-insurance deductibles on one side and then doubling that on the other. So those are crude targets, but we try to make sure we're right in between those typically each year. So if we do have a a difficult year, we can at least self-fund the original or the work in the first year without having to make an insurance claim. Rate stabilization there, that one, we really did refine a lot to be more kind of tied to the variable rates that we have with our water sales. And so we made a calculation there on 10% or 20% of our overall water sales. So that's the two balances there. Pension stabilization, we fleshed out a little bit to be more in line with, you know, how we might see the calpers smoothing and then the required payments they bring to us with the market fluctuations. So we have a kind of a 1X and a 2X there as well in terms of how much we expect any one given year to change in terms of mandated payments. And then capital fund, we tied to the CMF. And that's to be used for contingencies, meaning unplanned projects and then grant matches that do come up. Water supply projects, we have a pace there to build up a reserve of $2.5 million a year per year over the next four years. So I have a target there of 10. I mean, obviously, we'll need more than that for any water supply projects, but this is meant to be kind of seed funding and or to make sure we're building the balance over time. So we were on target there. And then our operating is kind of what's left over unrestricted, unanticipated expenses. And we do have targets there for percentage of our operating budget. Over the last couple of years, and this is kind of the way the overall cash reserves have gone, and I split this up into restricted and encumbered on the bottom, meaning we can't really touch those funds without making other kind of policy decisions. And the more discretionary reserves on the top, those are the ones we've typically used to weather the storms, to kind of deal with unexpected expenses. And you can see how, you know, in the light blue boxes there over from 2021 to 2023, the significant drawdown of those discretionary reserves that we were relying on to weather the drought and also to come up with the extra funds for water purchases from Sonoma. And so you can see how that's bounced back here in 2024. So what I was mentioning earlier with the kind of positive fiscal results, we don't have healthier balances here, which is part of the plan and kind of how we expected to kind of start rebuilding those reserves back towards the levels we had pre-drought. We're not quite there, as you can see. I think each year we would generally expect some of those restricted funds to to keep pushing up on the bottom there. So, you know, unrestricted funds are at the top of $47 million now. You know, we're not quite back to the 50 million range we had, you know, pre-drought, but we're getting there. So that's kind of the idea is we're trying to build it back slowly over the next four years. And so we're on track to do that as well. And so for the final slide here, this is just to kind of, you know, bring those last two together. So we have our minimum balances or target balances. And then in the middle there, the fiscal year 2024 year-end. That's where we are now as, you know, the calculations would go for the year. I just wanted to kind of share that with the board here now, noting that we've met our minimum balances in most every area except for capital. Capital, we're very close. Capital, I had a discussion, you know, with the finance team. And we've, we kind of determined rather than, you know, messing with the calculations here, because the capital fund does have dedicated funding sources from the capital maintenance fee, some of our grants as well as the operating transfer. We want to wait and see how the projects end up this year, the kind of like carryforward encumbrances. And we feel pretty confident we'll be able to meet the minimum balance after this year, you know, once we've kind of taken a look at all the projects that are scheduled. There will be some excess to be able to make that minimum balance at the end of this year. And so rather than kind of mid-cycle adjusting anything there, we just left the balance be a little below the minimum. But that is one area that we want to make sure we, you know, in the next budget planning cycle, we we meet our minimum targets there to make our way through the next two-year cycle. Water supply, as I mentioned, we met that target on track. And then operating, the operating reserve right now, we're above our minimum and we're actually, you know, above our target balance. So we're in a good shape there to be able to be more flexible and be able to handle any unanticipated expenses here through the winter time and into next summer. So all in all, again, positive results. We're seeing some, you know, well-planned kind of additions to some of these reserves. And also, we're in a good position now to be able to enter the next budget cycle on firm footing as opposed to having to rebuild them with, with part of the budget. So all in all, positive. And I'm happy to take any questions the board has on these.
Great. Matt, any questions?
No, I'll be right out.
Okay. Good. Ron G.
Yeah, thanks Brett for the updates. Brett, can you just remind us of what is captured in the restricted and encumbered funds? You mentioned a couple of items. I think the amount that we have to hold to for bond.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's pretty much what it is. So there's, there's the bond holdings that we're required to. So each of our three bond issuances requires to hold a certain amount in deposit in case of default on their side. So it's part of the covenants. We also consider the restricted funds to be the capital funds I mentioned earlier that are kind of already earmarked towards projects and fireflow projects. So those are restricted in the sense now that we have them encumbered towards a project. We could move them if we wanted to cancel projects or change that around, but for now, we kind of consider them into the year already committed and earmarked towards the project. So encumbered would be that one. Sort of legally restricted is the bond ones, and then encumbered would be fireflow and capital.
And that's why we're seeing the increase in restricted funds because we are encumbering capital expenses.
That's exactly right, yeah.
Okay, okay. Got it. Thank you.
Great. Larry, any comments?
No.
So Brett, I appreciate this update on the reserves. This is super important to me and I think to all of us that we set out a target to stabilize the finances of the organization two years ago, and I think we are well on the way. We're not there yet. You know, we depleted many of our reserves over the years coming into when at least three of us got here. And these were very difficult decisions, but I think they're going to set Marin Water up for hopefully decades. And, and it was a difficult call. But thank goodness, as far as I'm concerned, that we're, we're on the way to this kind of financial stewardship and stability. So thank you for leading it. We have discussed over time facilities improvements, and I'm just wondering how you see those fitting in here and any thoughts about how we could either target other, you know, more distinctly, how we want to use funds and/or just make sure we understand where, where they're going. That was just one that I know we've talked about.
Yeah. And yes, and thank you for that. And I think, you know, I agree with your comments in terms of the kind of the planned kind of buildup and, you know, not there yet, but on a good track there. In terms of facility reserve, that's one where I think we could probably take it a couple of different directions depending on kind of the way the board wants to handle this. I think typically, you know, operating, the operating budget there is unrestricted. So at any given point, we needed to use funds there, we could take it out of there. Facilities by their nature are also capital kind of expenditure. So if we needed to use capital reserve, we could. I think maybe what you might be getting at is maybe adding another reserve fund that would kind of be towards future facility projects and being able to take any windfall revenues and or any future plan kind of step-ups into that. So I think we could, if you felt the need to kind of call it out more specifically, kind of like we do with our pension stabilization or our water supply projects, we could call it out and build up specifically, create a target for it maybe. And maybe have some sort of a planned funding in one of the next rate cycles once we have a project. Part of my little hesitation there is I know that the capital funds, I think we like to think of them, at least internally, as kind of that's for you know, things we need to take care of out in the community and, you know, in the, in, in our pipes and our pumps and everything else. And so I think it may be prudent to have kind of more of a call out for kind of internal facilities as those will be expensive. And when we do have one-time savings such as salary savings or things we didn't anticipate, maybe it might be appropriate to direct those towards a kind of a dedicated facility.
We know we have facilities needs. We know we have headquarters needs across the board, up, up in the watershed. So as you start to hone in on exactly what those are, then then let's make sure we have a place for them because they're not in the normal budget and it's coming. Winter's coming.
Winter is coming, yeah. So maybe we can take this and consider maybe some either revisions to the reserve policy in the upcoming spring and/or as part of the budget planning process.
Are we still working on a facilities master plan or understanding of assessment? Or that's we can understand where our, where our targets can be. And we start looking to fund an account like that, understanding what are cost-wise, what we're looking at?
Yeah, we do have that in our annual work plan with other priorities. I don't think we've really gotten into it at the level we want to or really need to. I expect that'll be maybe a good area for discussion at the upcoming board retreat as we develop this coming annual plan.
Jed, you triggered one more question.
I tend to be triggering.
Positive one.
Okay. Inspiring.
Brett, it's, you know, as we establish reserve funds and, and minimum balances, does that impact our ability to go out? The amount that we can go out raise through bonds or is there any relationship there? I know there are some require, you know, revenue requirements and debt level requirements that affect our ability to borrow money.
So the bottom line is yes, definitely. I don't want to get too nuanced here, but I think so the reserves, the reserve levels, they would want to see kind of this consistent, you know, management kind of attention and commitment towards, you know, maintaining reserves and using them, you know, prudently. And I think we have established that pretty well here. And then they want to see kind of that minimum level. And we talked a lot about that last year as we kind of looked through the reserves and some of these ways that it goes into your credit ratings, right, and how they may rate you. So right now, we have, we have a very positive credit rating. We do have room to improve there. And so that may be one area where if they start to see our reserves really be managed well and building up over time, we may get a higher credit rating, which would essentially lower our cost of borrowing.
Right.
So it may not necessarily get us the ability to borrow more, but it would make the financing cheaper, basically, make it more affordable, right? It may lower the rate that we can get there if we have a healthy reserves. Really, when they look at the total amount of kind of funds that they would lend in that kind of market, they more look at your operating revenues over your expenses. So they're really looking at your ability to pay back and the consistent ability there. And so I think they all tell the same story. You want to kind of be able to tell the same story to the bond issuers about what, you know, what, you know, strength of our finances here at the district and reserves are a big piece of that. But they'll obviously be looking at the operating to expense ratio because that really tells you how much money you're bringing in and how much you could pay back. And so the two of those go hand in hand.
Got it. Thank you.
Great. Any public comment, Terry?
I'll just finish up here. So we have one more slide just to summarize. It's okay. We have rate revenues.
I'm just really trying to bring the public in, okay?
Yeah. Rate revenues through the first four months are slightly below budget, but in a really good range. Our expenses are both well below budget. And so, you know, on the whole, we're, you know, in a positive, in a positive financial situation here. Consumption is consistent with our budgeted amount. We're seeing that consistent, you know, tick up each year. We are 5% higher this year than we were the prior year, which is again inconsistent with how we were planning going forward. And as we just got finished discussing the financial audit nearly complete, we did have some positive results due to some one-time expenditure savings and our reserves are meeting the minimum balances. So all positive and now I can complete my report.
Terrific. Any comments, Terry?
Yes. Phil Sauter, please.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I think it would be helpful next time to show both water consumption and water revenues by tier. It would be hard to compare with prior periods, but the information starting with the new rate structure would be useful. Not only could we see how the new rates are helping finances, but we could also get some insight as to how the new rates are affecting our conservation goals. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Terrific. That was information only, and we'll move on to item 4C, which is our quarterly investment report, please.
So do not have a presentation for this one. This is my item again. This is our quarterly, required quarterly reporting on our investment portfolio. And so what we're looking at here is information as of the quarter ending September, September 30th, 2024, the first quarter of the year. And so our investment portfolio, our pooled cash carried a value of $85.6 million, consistent with what we just saw in reserves there. Our investments are largely in our LEAF fund, $73 million in LEAF. We do also have about $7.8 million in our money market funds. And we had some carryover of the checking account at the end of the quarter as well. So far this year, we've earned $913,000 in interest. Again, well ahead of prior years. And so we're on a very good pace there going forward, and we're not seeing much change so far in interest rates, at least over the last month or two. We are seeing in the last quarter about a four and a half, 4.5, 6% yield so far through this year. That's ticking down by a couple of basis points since then, but we're still in that healthy 4.5% range. We were at 3.5% last year, and if you go two or three years back, we were, you know, less than 1%. So this has all been positive news again for us. You know, this will affect again potentially some of our budgeting for next year if we want to kind of count on some of these gains, although interest rates are very hard to predict, obviously. But nonetheless, I think we feel pretty confident that through the rest of this year and at least in the first part of next year, we should be getting above, above budget kind of in excess of what we thought in terms of interest earnings. And so that should help again with any revenue fluctuations, or if we do happen to have any unexpected expenses that will help as these are unrestricted funds when they come back to us. So generally positive. I'm happy to take any questions the board may have.
Great. Any board comments? Nothing new here. Thank you. Any public comments?
There are none.
Terrific. That was for information only. And now we move to a public hearing regarding board compensation, please. Item 5.
Thank you, Chair Smith and directors. I'm Molly McLean, District General Counsel. And we will get to the public hearing shortly. We did notice the public hearing just to review for the board and whoever is tuned in today in the Marin Independent Journal for two weeks in a row as required under Government Code Section 6066 for purposes of this proposed ordinance that's in front of the board today. So we, we did have a presentation on this on Tuesday evening at our regular board meeting. We went into some details about board compensation. We took, we took a look at the current ordinance that's in effect, which is codified in the district code, which sets the current compensation per diem rate at $200 and caps the meetings at 10 meetings. That's consistent with, the 10 meetings is consistent with state law. Water Code Section 20200 governs and the sequential provisions govern board compensation for water districts. In this case, our district speaks to the public hearing requirement of adoption by ordinance of any increase, the cap of 5% annually for any increase. I will again point out that the last increase was implemented effective February of 2017, and there has been no increase to date. So looking at the 5%, as we did Tuesday night, the maximum amount that could be put in place for 2025 would be approximately $295. Looking at Consumer Price Index for the region as we did, that's approximately a 3% increase. And the staff is proposing. And then there's a draft ordinance in the packet that the increase be set to $250, $250 per diem amount. There is no proposed change to the number of meetings. It's what the state law allows. So with that, we can open the public hearing, take any comment that we might have, close the public hearing, and then if the board, unless the board has questions before we, we go in that direction.
Great. So open the public hearing first or?
Well, unless there are questions, but typically, yes, we would, would take comments from the public and then there could be discussion amongst the board.
Any comments?
Just a procedural piece here. We talked on Tuesday night about potential changes to the drafted ordinance.
Yes.
How would those be implemented in this process? Should we want to take them up?
So if there, we've done this in the past where we've had ordinances in front of the board, and if there are simple changes that we can implement on the fly that are clear and we have clear direction, we can make those changes to the ordinance at this meeting. If it's complicated and there's a lot of additional work to do, then we would have to take that back. But we can do some changes
Thank you.
Today. You're welcome.
Are there any, I mean, do we want to just talk about what changes you're considering so that the public comment can?
Would that come after the public hearing piece?
If you want to entertain some discussion on that ahead of the public hearing, that's probably fine, I think.
Okay, well, so if we want to start comments now on this entire process, we can do it. I don't have any personally proposed changes. I know there were, we talked about some as a board on Tuesday night, and that's what I was looking to figure out how those would be integrated in.
I think of the, of the changes that we talked about that resonated with me was, was the suggestion at maintaining the cap on the monthly maximum at, at $2,000. And so the, the per diem goes up, but and obviously that wouldn't be, it wouldn't reflect 10, a maximum of 10. So the math is different. I don't know how that gets how that would So the math is different. I don't know how that gets, how that would get built into the ordinance correctly. But I think the concept is, you know, that the cap is a meaningful upper limit of what seems reasonable as a compensation.
Yeah. So I think the easiest way to do that would be to adjust the, the number of days for the per diem amount. If that seems like it's something that is, you know, of interest to the board. That number of days is identified in the ordinance as ten, consistent with state law at the maximum. That could be changed. If we change it to eight, that would mean that the per diem amount would increase. But the cap would not be above two thousand dollars per month because you would only be able to submit for days of service at eight days. If that makes sense.
One way to do it. Comments around you?
Not, not, not on specific tweaks. I think when we get, you know, I don't know at what point, Molly, that we, we kind of bring forth bigger issues related to the ordinance, questions or concerns. I don't know if that's after the public hearing or?
Well, typically the public hearing is for, for the board to listen to any comments or concerns at the public. So that could influence the direction of the discussion. But if there are things that, you know, the, any of the board members want to raise before the public hearing, that's certainly acceptable.
Yeah, I'll go ahead then. You know, I thought, you know, well, first, thank you, Molly, for bringing this up on Tuesday, which gave us time to reflect on this. And, you know, in doing so, I, I think I've, my position has evolved on this. I, you know, the justification, I think, you know, we largely talked about the barriers to entry into this type of public service. And I don't think that increasing the, you know, the, the stipend by, you know, fifty dollars really addresses that. I think it's, the, the barrier to entry is the time commitment. And if we were, I, I think, you know, if we were being, at least my feeling is if we really wanted to address the challenge, the challenges that people face in doing this type of public service, we would stop designating committee meetings as special board meetings. That to me is the biggest single issue that makes it, I mean, board meetings alone are difficult for people that don't have the flexibility or the resources to spend a lot of time on public service. But we have, I think, by special noticing, made it considerably harder. And so that's where I'd like to see our attention focused, if in fact our intent is to lower the bar. I don't think this lowers the bar. And, you know, I, at a time when I still get a lot of emails about concerns over water bills, I, you know, I, I think, well, how does that look? You know, that's, that, that, you know, we're not really, we're, I'm only, you know, we're benefiting ourselves. I don't think we're benefiting others by doing this. So, so that's, that's where I've landed, I would say.
Larry, anything you want to say before public hearing?
Well, I'm a little confused by Rajiv's statement. The, the situation is that perhaps we need to do a better job of making people aware of the time commitment involved in being in the office. I think that makes more sense than worrying about whether meetings are dual noticed. As I have said previously, if you don't want to attend, don't attend. I mean, it's not, you know, earth shaking whether we are at the meeting or we aren't. I believe we owe it to our constituents to be there, but, you know, it's not something that someone keeps track of. So, you know, if it doesn't fit in the time available in that individual's schedule, then just don't attend rather than feel concerned about it.
All right. Well, that's a separate subject and I'm sure we'll bring that up another time. My, my one main goal here is to take away the politis, political side of decision making and make this a regular, non-political concept. And, you know, waiting till after elections and people don't want to look good because you're compensating yourself. Well, I think doesn't make sense. So I'd love to set us up for the long term, have much more of a cadence like we think about rates and we think about other things. Try to take the politics out of it and do things right and appropriately. So not having any adjustment for whatever, seven years and then going forward with no adjustment doesn't really make intellectual sense to me. So I'm flexible on the terms, but I do think that just holding it for the sake of holding it because it might look good, might not be a prudent way to run any organization, right? You want to run it, run it right. So it's my only comment. But I'm open, a public hearing. Why don't we start and have any public comments that we might have and then we'll continue the conversation.
Sure. We do have a public comment, Mr. Phil Sauter. Go ahead, Mr. Sauter.
Yeah, I've just got to unmute it. Okay. Based on the information provided and the belief that we're getting good value for money, I'd like to support staff's current recommendation for adjustments.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay, great. So now we'll close the public hearing. And if there's any continued discussion that folks would like to have, I think we all gave our first thoughts. While we go in the same order, if you want.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jed, for bringing this forward. And Molly, thank you for Tuesday night as well as bringing it back here and the work that goes into this. And I've been able to reflect on it quite a bit too since Tuesday night and very sensitive to the barriers of entry piece that's been brought up already. In this county, it's very difficult to be able to do that. But I fall more in line with what Rajiv was saying is if there's a barrier to entry, does fifty dollars a meeting solve that problem? And I can't come to a conclusion that it does. And we also offer full benefits for a board member and their family, which is a considerable amount of compensation that definitely helps push the, push it over the limit. So I'm not sure how relevant the fifty dollar raise is for that. And what that actually does to actually bring people in, into a place where they can serve better, if that makes sense, there's more opportunity to do that. So with that, you know, going back from the compensation piece and the time commitment piece. If it's a time commitment piece and we are responsible for, you know, attendance to our constituents, but there is a huge time piece. The time commitment is self inflicted. I mean, this was a chosen pathway not that long ago. And so looking at it from, from that perspective, I agree. I think that if there's a time commitment piece that's the barrier, we should address that later. But today I'm not able to move forward with this decision.
Monty, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I, I think, you know, for two reasons. I mean, I do think that, you know, that when it comes to the compensation, it is not much. But again, I, I think about where maybe it's not, maybe how one feels about whether it's not much is, is a personal thing. And so when I think of people who, for whom financially that actually might be meaningful. And when we think about nighttime meetings, if you've got to hire somebody to, you know, to watch your kids or something like that, I do think that that makes a difference. I also think, you know, to, to the point Jed that you're making, which is that, you know, if we don't make a decision here today, then the next year, the next board's got to make that decision and just get, and I do think, I wish that, that we actually could just on a regular basis apply the CPI to it. And it's just, and it's just part of, of how, it's how we do, how we deal with staff salaries.
Which we legally can't and we're not suggesting, but the concept is.
Yeah, the concept is taken into consideration. Thank you for that clarification. An important one, you know, so it, if we don't make this decision here today and as, as the only board member who can make this decision and have no financial benefit from it, and I guess maybe no political repercussion either, I just think that it makes sense as a matter of good management going forward because we're not kicking the can down the road. And I feel like that has been, I'll just say as an ending theme for my tenure here, has been to not kick the can down the road on uncomfortable decisions, but to do the thing that needs to be done for the benefit of the district. So.
You know, Monty, I'm not saying we shouldn't make a decision. I'm saying we should make a decision. Right?
Yeah. Good clarification.
You're making, you want to make the decision not to change anything.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that is a decision. Larry?
Oh, I agree with Jed and Monty. You know, it's just inflation that we're talking about. It's not some change. It's just an adjustment for the loss of value of the dollar. If you took this current approach, you would eventually have a per diem compensation of zero, in essence. Because if you don't adjust for inflation, then the value of the money just keeps decreasing. So I, I don't see it as a major issue one way or the other. And I think that Monty's concept and idea is valid, that there are costs potentially involved with doing this job. And those costs increase as well due to inflation. So I, I don't see the, the benefit of not adjusting for inflation. I, I do have concerns shared with Matt that, you know, it, it may not be the best look. But I, I think that we just have to face the reality and move forward.
Good question. Can we, can we have a discussion about the health benefits for directors now?
It's not specifically agendized. I suppose we could consider it as part of compensation, right? It's not on table for action.
Right. And currently we have benefits available for directors.
That's correct.
And, and am I allowed to ask if anyone is using them?
I think that I would not know the answer necessarily to that. I, I mean, it is public information. So I don't think.
Be supportive of taking, getting rid of that. I think it doesn't make sense.
Getting rid of, I, it's, we could agendize it for future.
Okay.
I mean, I think building on that, Molly, how, how come that wasn't included? Is that a very, is that a separate ordinance that governs our?
It is a separate resolution that was adopted, separate direction from the Board of Directors. At, I believe it was, well, I couldn't even say exactly when I, without looking again when it was instituted. But it is, you know, having the, the board treated as an employee for purposes of receiving healthcare benefits through CalPERS. And there is a separate resolution that's adopted to put that in place, separate and apart from the ordinance. It's not addressed in the Water Code sections that we're talking about today. I mean, so generally, yes, I would consider it part of the compensation package, but that's why it wasn't brought as a collective.
Do we, do we know, we did a, at our previous meeting, we looked, we saw where our per diem compared to other water districts and, and we were on the bottom end, I think, is worthy of just mentioning for people who don't remember that or weren't able to attend. Do those, those board positions also include health benefits? Do you know?
We did do a comparison look at that some time ago. I would say that some do, but it's less typical, I think, across the board. I'd have to go back and pull that up, information forward. I would say that not at the level that this district does provide. I think it's, most of them are less, but I'd have to, I'd have to look at that.
I mean, I, I'll maybe speak, you know, differently about, I, when I, when I, my personal feeling about health benefits is that everybody should have health benefits. And if people need health benefits, I find that to be something that we shouldn't be denying people personally. So as a, as a, you know, again, as a, as, as a barrier to entry potentially for people to participate in board service. I think, and, and just as, I think frankly, just something that if people need it, if they don't need it, if they're covered, and maybe that's a different conversation that a different, for a different board is, is that if, if board members don't need, you know, benefits because they can be covered otherwise, maybe there's a way to adjust that, but to keep costs down. But so I feel like it's, it's an important thing to consider.
Just, you know, I did bring up the benefits piece, but my intention was not to have those there just to understand a full total compensation is the reason I brought them up. And I'd like to follow up on what one of the comments Larry said about inflation, because I think that's an identified problem we're trying to solve for. Because other than that, I don't, I think that's the only identified problem. And so two hundred dollars is still somewhat of an arbitrary amount. And so if we're looking to actually address a problem of inflation, then we should start, I'm open to starting annually, have it on a board calendar, a certain month every year that we look at whatever we feel comfortable with and then adding that in, but a big jump right now.
Great. I, I, the only thing that I would add to what we have here is that we have an annual review with take into consideration inflation and other matters. And I don't know when you do it, but probably January, but whatever is right for the cadence of other like decisions. And that's my only change.
Okay, I can take that.
Maybe we can, should we see if anyone agrees with that addition?
So I, I think that we can, yes. But, but just a thought about how to address that issue because I have given it some thought since it was mentioned to get previously at the Tuesday meeting. Rather than codifying that, I think that we could, we've just amended our board policy, but we could, or, and we could look at adding it to, say, the compensation policy and as an adjustment that says we're going to do that each, you know, year at this time. And that that's a review and then bring that forward on a regular basis that would allow sort of not, not in the code, but in, in a policy direction to staff that would make clear the interest in that.
And perhaps, Molly, it makes more sense to do it on July 1st, which is when the CPI adjustments occur for the contracts.
We could, we could certainly.
Labor contracts.
That makes sense, Larry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'd call that a first and a second to review that policy.
I will bring it back to the board.
And, and I, and I, and I'd love to review the health benefits policy that we have for the directors as well in the, in the future. I think that's been brought up. So I'll, I'll first that.
I can second that too. And I, and I don't, what we're going forward here with the proposal, I, I would also like to see where we would stand with, with, again, limiting compensation to two thousand dollars a month, which would turn into eight meetings versus ten as a, you know, as another means by which we're in part, we're addressing, you know, the number of meetings. And as a, as a cost cap means of being reasonable.
I will, I will say that there is a plan to revisit again the, the dual noticing question, I believe, at the December 10th meeting. So that's an upcoming meeting item.
All right. Are we ready for a vote?
If someone wants to make a motion in a second, then we can have a vote.
Yep.
Well, I'll make a motion with the, with the amendment to add the eight meeting cap. At two fifty, eight, eight meeting cap makes out to still the same cap of what we've got currently of two thousand dollars maximum per month.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second. All right. Real call.
Director Kush.
No.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
No.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Hi.
Chair Smith.
Hi.
So we have an ordinance with that modification. And I do have your other comments and we'll be looking at bringing forward those items in the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly, for guiding us on that. Moving on to the next item, six.
The next, the next F A C meeting is tentatively scheduled for January 23rd.
Okay, thank you. Adjourned.
Take care.